Well, welcome and good afternoon to our entire DOE family. To include those of you here in the forest all auditorium, I understand there are folks in a smaller auditorium across the hall. We have a number of folks, as I understand it, watching on live stream and on our internal television network. And of course, to those 47 sites across the country who are connected via video teleconference. I am Tim McLeese. I serve on the secretary's chief of staff team specifically as the chief of staff to the deputy secretary. And judging from the overflow here we have in the auditorium, and I trust we have similar engagements across the country, we have a lot of folks who are interested and quite frankly deserve to hear directly from our leaders. We are so very grateful that you all stuck with us during a couple of trying times where we tried to set the date, but we had something that as many of you are probably aware of, and the secretary will talk about called the Iranian negotiations that interrupted us. So hopefully, we have today's session. We're going to hear from you and the secretary and the deputy secretary, and we'll try to get on a steady pace with these town halls in the future. So briefly, today, we want to provide an opportunity on two fronts. The first one, we want to hear directly from the secretary and the deputy secretary about the department's mission, certainly its accomplishments, particularly in those recent accomplishments. And then second, and most importantly, we need, we must hear from you all, here in the audience and throughout the complex. So after our leaders give their brief remarks, I strongly encourage you to ask questions. We have mics set up on either sides of the aisle. We will, for those who, you who care not to stand up, we will have microphones brought to you, particularly those in the middle. And I also have a set of questions that were sent to us in advance from across the site that I will use as kind of a starter to get us going here. So again, this is just one in a series of town hall events from, and you will see, hear from our two leaders here on the stage, but also from leadership across the complex. And we're just absolutely thrilled to be able to connect these events. I'm now honored to introduce our secretary and their deputy secretary. I must say, for those of you who are not aware, the secretary, a couple of weeks ago, was involved in an event on the Mall. It was certainly events that were celebrating Earth Day, of which he was introduced and then, or followed by the recording star usher. I tried, we tried to follow that here today, but no luck. So, Mr. Secretary, in your usual fashion, you will have to entertain us.
Thanks, Tim, although the truth is, I was both preceded and followed by usher. I was just the intermission act for a few minutes. The, as Tim said, it's really been too long since we had our last town hall meeting. We had scheduled several and then events intervened, as you know. But anyway, it's good to be back to have a chance to chat. Before I actually start discussing some of the missions, just want to say that we did, since our last meeting, it was, it was a while ago, we did manage to have four of our Senate nominees confirmed at the end of, end of last year, and that was, that was great. Lynn Orr, Franklin Orr from Stanford, was confirmed as undersecretary for, for science and energy. He's traveling today. Joe Heeser, I think I see back there, as chief financial officer. Chris Smith, put your hand up at least, you know, heading our fossil energy office. And Ellen Williams, who I don't see, is Ellen here? No. Ellen Williams was confirmed to head our RPE. So that was, that was good, getting, getting more of our team, team in place at that time. We still have a few more to go. We have two right, two up before the committee right now. We hope to have two more following when they're finished getting vetted, and then we'll have a, a full house of our confirmees. Let me say a little bit about what has been just another extraordinary four weeks in, in this department's life. The, you know, we, we have stated before, you know, our missions, our principal missions somewhat whimsically as, you know, weapons and windmills and quarks and quagmires, you know, nuclear security, energy, science, and cleanup. And in the last four weeks, we've actually had some pretty significant progress on all four. I mean, it's just kind of an, I think, a nice thing to kind of step back and think about what all of you are accomplishing. On the nuclear security side, an evident recent event of some consequence, which the department played a huge role in, was the, at least the first stage of the Iran, Iran I went to join Secretary Kerry for the last six, seven weeks of the negotiations, which is why we several times canceled town hall meetings, for example. But I don't know, I hope some of you saw on Friday, last Friday, on the front page of the New York Times, was it really a terrific article, if you haven't seen it, I'd really recommend you look at it, which spelled out for the first time, and named some names for the first time, in terms of our security, nuclear security laboratories and sites, their role, not just in the last six or seven weeks, but their role throughout the entire Iran negotiation as, as underpinning the negotiations. The, you know, we are, we are the nuclear security experts in this country. I'm using we generically, including our, including our labs and sites and our, and our, our federal folks as well. And, and so, you know, it probably shouldn't be surprising, if you really think about it, that they would be being called upon all the time to supply critical analysis for what is a technically very complex issue and agreement. So if you haven't seen it, look at it. I mean, it talks about, you know, Oak Ridge and centrifuges, and it talks about our Kansas City plant and, and Y-12, and Y-12. It talks about Livermore. It talks about Argon, basically, you know, redesigning reactors for minimizing plutonium. It talks about modeling for all of the enrichment capacity, et cetera. And, you know, you know, my getting called to the negotiation probably put us, we were, we were always trying to stay below the radar, that ended. And then, really, this, I just think it was a wonderful article about how this department has nurtured capabilities for decades, and how those underpin much more than, than certainly the public realizes, and this was just a great, a great example. So I really urge you to, to go and look at that. On the energy, so that was the, the weapons, if you like, and nuclear security. On energy, we could talk about a lot of things, but in particular, let me mention that last, last Tuesday, the vice president unveiled the administration's Quadrennial Energy Review First Instalment. Many of you probably know, this was an enormous lift for about, well, the real big lift for about 15 months. Involved 20 agencies across the government, chaired, overseen out of the executive office of the president. But the work was done here by the Energy Policy and Systems Analysis Office with the collaboration of many, many others, many, many of the energy programs, all of the, all of the energy programs. And I see Adam there, and EIA, for example, played, played a major role, but, but fossil energy, EERE, nuclear, am I forgetting? Sorry? Electricity, thank you, electricity, all, all played major roles. In a large document, if you haven't seen it, again, again, I would, I would urge you, go to the website and look at it. It's, I don't know, 300 and some pages. The appendices of about equal length will be coming out soon, and they are data-rich, analytically based, and provide a very comprehensive picture of America's energy infrastructure, the needs and the challenges, and a whole bunch of recommendations. Tomorrow, I'll be testifying in the Senate on that, and then in a couple of weeks in the House. And we're hoping this is going to be the basis for some real bipartisan legislation, looking at major infrastructure needs in this, in this country. So that was a really, really big effort, and I think, and then we'll soon kick off a second phase. If I go to the quarks, that is, science, the, a major event was the, the end of the, of the funding for, the support for Coral. So this is a factor of five to seven increase in, in supercomputing power. Again, this department has for decades nurtured, been the, been the, on the cutting edge of large-scale computation and modeling in this country, really going back 20 years to, to, well, it goes back more than 20 years, but 20 years in particular goes back to the beginning of science-based archival stewardship and the, and the big push to, to the next scale of computation for that problem. But now, we have science actually in the lead, working with NNSA for the next generation. And this is a big step called Coral. It involves Oak Ridge, Argon, and, and Livermore. And it is the big step before the last big step to exascale computing, which we hope to get to at the beginning of the next, the next, the next decade. So again, just emphasizing, again, fantastic capability, that it's not just like an overnight program. This is, these are, this is decades in the making, and, and again, many of you are engaged in that. And finally, on the quagmires, the, the cleanup, again, a major step, a couple of weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago now, I forgot, the president reversed a decision taken in 1985 to mingle, to co-mingle civilian-spent fuel and, and our defense waste. You know, our big waste cleanup challenges at Hanford and Savannah River and elsewhere. And a study that, that was done in the department last fall came to the conclusion that at this stage, we're probably better off at least pursuing the option of separate pathways for civilian-spent fuel and, and high-level defense waste. In the latter case, we have many more options for, for, for certain kinds of waste, including, I, I have an emotional attachment to deep boreholes to get rid of some, some of this waste, and it's, it may be a really great fit to our big cesium and strontium waste at, at Hanford. So that's something that we are now, are now pursuing, and could be very, very important in terms of meeting our obligations on defense waste and kind of maybe unlocking the whole waste, waste system a bit. So again, I, I mean, I just wanted to really emphasize that, again, you take it, these four mission areas, and just in the last four weeks, literally, I mean, really big, really, really big steps taken in all of them, and it's, it's based upon the, again, the capabilities of this department, our federal employees and our, and our laboratories and sites. So with that, I'll maybe just say a few more things, and maybe these will, these will lead to questions, maybe not. First of all, I want to say that, again, it's been a long time since we met. The fiscal year 2016 budget submission was a very strong one. Administration went forward with about a 9% increase in our budget, strong on both the defense, on NNSA, and on the civilian sides. Now, currently, in the Congress, of course, they are starting their appropriations markups with the budget caps, the so-called sequester levels. And so, these, these initial marks do not meet those lofty aspirations. But, but first of all, I want to emphasize that, you know, we did, we did, we did very well. And that again shows the importance of our missions, the importance that the president attaches to them. Secondly, the administration has made it very clear, it's going to keep fighting, and there's lots of, lots of sympathetic people on, in the Congress, on both sides of the aisle, who recognize that the sequestration levels, which were never supposed to be, quotes, "real," just do not support a responsible budget for either our national defense or our programs to stimulate the economy, protect the environment, et cetera. So I still think that there's a very, very high chance that, that something will, will evolve, there will be higher budget levels. The president certainly proposed one way of paying for those, for those increases in his, in his budget submission. And I think, when all is said and done, I feel pretty good. I think we're going to have, you know, again, a strong, a strong, a strong budget going forward across the board. At least, I hope, and we're going to keep fighting for that, I can assure you. Another thing I do want to mention, because it's going to be a very, very big deal for us here, but frankly, for the country, and I think for the world, this year will be the important road to Paris, if you like, in terms of climate change negotiations. The, the president's announcement in November with President Xi in China on ambitious climate targets was a big deal. I can't tell you how much the conversation has been shifted in our discussion with many, many other countries. Recently, our neighbor, Mexico, for example, at the end of March, came forward with the first kind of emerging economy, strong, ambitious climate targets. We here, we are co-chairing now, as a result of that announcement, the two presidents of Mexico and the United States announced a joint task force to look at implementation of both of our carbon commitments. We will chair, we, we chair, not will chair, we do chair, that, that joint task force. And that's just one indicator of what are going to be a whole bunch of major events built upon our clean technology work, our all-of-the-above clean technology work as the foundation for what we are going to do in taking a, a, a high profile and an aggressive stance, frankly, in, in heading towards Paris and the climate negotiations, and then heading away from Paris, even more importantly, to actually get things done based upon our technology. A lot of other things, deputy secretary will talk about, for example, I think her recent trade mission to China, which was very successful in terms of energy technology. You'll talk about that, Liz, right?
I wasn't planning to.
You wasn't planning to.
You just made the most important points about it.
All right, well, then I'll talk about it, the, very briefly, but, but this is an example of, things are happening all over the place, and, and we're getting terrific support. I should, I see John Elkind there. International Affairs has been a little bit busy these, this, this year. And by the way, John is, is, his nomination is up again at the, at the, at the committee. We're looking forward to that getting, getting done. But let me just say, this was a, really an historic thing in which two departments, Commerce and Energy, had a joint energy technology trade mission to China. We had 20, well, 24 companies in the end, going around to Beijing and Shanghai and Guangzhou. And it's the kind of thing that just says, there's real motion going on. You know, we never know what's going to happen in Paris in December at that negotiation, but I think the conditions are much, much better than any, anybody could have, would have guessed before the U.S.-China announcement last, last November. So that's going to be very exciting, another area where, again, I think we, we may have a huge, a huge impact. Let me just end up by, there's a couple, couple things, just saying that, one is that we want to encourage greater participation in things like the federal employee viewpoint survey. It's very important for us to do our jobs and to try to help to see how we can move the ball forward in terms of, in terms of, of our workforce. We have great opportunity with our workforce, but also challenges, including some demographic challenges. We need to, we need to, to, to have our current workforce effective and, and advancing our programs. We also need to recruit, recruit new people and a diverse, a diverse workforce. And, and secondly, and this I think I will, Liz will discuss, I think, is that we are also directing the establishment of Workplace Improvement Forum to look at improving, you know, employee quality of life while at work, and enhancing work experience across the entire DOE complex. And I think you will speak more, more to that. Okay, very good. So anyway, that's just a few things to open, open things up, but again, I did want to start with the, this idea that we have a diverse set of missions. We are a science and technology powerhouse. I've said that before, I'll say it again. It has been evidenced repeatedly just in the last four weeks, and we're, we're making a big difference, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. And Tim, so neither of us need to be usher, Tim. We didn't need to proceed or follow as rock stars because Politico reports this morning, our secretary is the rock star. So I have a great pleasure in looking out at this audience and knowing some of those who are looking at us on screens, because it's very different from when I stood here previously, where I really didn't recognize a lot of the faces. Many of the faces here, I've had the privilege of working with already so closely in my first, a little more than six months on the job, and then also added our labs and sites. I've visited a number of you, we've done all-hands meetings, and I really appreciate the fact that so many are participating today. I did think I would start out and, and talk a little about where I've been, all the places I've gone, as Dr. Seuss says, but I didn't include the international visits, because really, I wanted to talk about the family that I've had the opportunity to visit across this country. I've been here, of course, and I've been out at Germantown. I've been to Argon and Fermilab, and I've been to Nettle in Pittsburgh. I've visited Enrel, and I've visited WAPA in, outside of Denver. In Idaho, I saw our, our test range. I've been to Savannah River, and I've gone to Pantex and Y-12. And I've been to Oak Ridge. In Oak Ridge, an amazing meeting with, with a couple of the original women of the atomic city, who are in their late 80s and early 90s, and were extraordinary. When I talked to them about what they were doing, they said, "We were just serving our country." They were really, they were remarkable. They didn't know what they were doing, they weren't told until after the war was over. But they were, they were the beginnings of who we are today, that, that dedication to duty and to service. I've been to Berkeley Lab and to Livermore, and I've, just recently, in the last few days, I've visited our lab at Stanford. And everywhere I've visited, I've been so impressed by the dedicated and hard-working public servants who every day put their shoulder to the wheel and do work worthy of our great nation. Meeting many of you and hearing about the important work you do, as well as the challenges that you face, has helped me to hone in on four areas of focus in the time that I will spend here as deputy, complementing the goals that the secretary has already described. And I thought I would touch on those briefly. First of all, I'm focused on our people. That's you, the people of this department here in Washington, at our labs and at our field sites. I see us as, and at our PMAs. This is one very important enterprise spread across the country, but we have responsibility for each of you, our federal employees and our contractors. And you are all key to successfully executing our mission. I'm going to come back to that at the end, as the secretary said. Second, I'm focused on our nuclear security. We have to follow through on the president's Prague vision, and we have a lot of work to do on that front. Securing nuclear materials around the world, countering proliferation, and ensuring the continued safety, security, and effectiveness of our nuclear deterrent. This is a no-fail mission, and I am grateful to those who execute it every day. Third, I'm focused on resilience and emergency response, something the secretary has tapped me to pay special attention to. We have two big responsibilities. First, we have the responsibility to ensure that we are prepared to take care of our people in the case of an emergency, here in the headquarters, in the other sites in the greater national capital region, and all across the country. So in the face of a man-made or natural disaster, are we ready? Do we know what to do, and can we respond effectively to protect our people? Second, an even larger mission is that we are the sector-specific agency for the overall national framework for emergency preparedness and response. And there, we have the job of strengthening the energy sector against disruption by natural and man-made threats. And the newly released QER that the secretary mentioned has a lot to say about that, very important recommendations that it sets forth in this regard. Fourth, I'm focused on driving the American economy through the S&amp;T innovation that the secretary also mentioned. Generating new opportunities to keep America in the forefront of technological innovation drives our economy and creates jobs. And that includes jobs for transitioning veterans, it includes speeding the transition to a low-carbon economy, and it advances our recruitment and retention efforts. And that leads me to what I said I would come back to today, which is to talk about you, our people, who are our first priority. We do face several workforce challenges, and you have given us that feedback in the, in mechanisms like the federal employee viewpoint survey. We in the leadership team are committed to doing everything we can to improve employee engagement. That's a mandate that comes from the top of this administration, and to address workforce and workplace concerns, to make this the best place to work in the federal government. There are several department-wide efforts already underway, and I'll list a few of them. We have established a labor management forum to exchange ideas on department-wide issues and concerns. This forum is meeting on a quarterly basis, and it proactively works to strengthen DOE's employee engagement. And there, I want to call out a few members of our team, Jennifer Carter, and Tom Pansky, and John Hairston, for driving this effort. I don't know if any of them are in the audience. If you are, raise your hands. Yes, excellent. That's Jennifer, yes? Thank you. In addition, in support of the president's Management Council efforts, DOE has organized a coalition of six elements in our organization focused on employee engagement and best practices. These leading six organizations include EERE, EM, NNSA, OCIO, Bonneville Power Administration, and our Loan Programs Office. For example, EERE has established a mentoring program, and it's developing programs to support leaders in improving engagement with their employees. Bonneville has held town halls at all levels of the organization to discuss employee survey results, the meaning behind the results, and methods for improving the next results. In addition, to ensure that we can attract and recruit a highly qualified workforce, as the secretary mentioned, which is a very high priority for us, as we see in many of our sites and in our own building here, the aging of our workforce, we've established a corporate recruitment and outreach office under Bob Gibbs' able leadership in the office of the Chief Human Capital Officer. This group is charged with understanding current recruiting and outreach efforts and developing a strategy to support DOE's mission. And I've been meeting with them to discuss our efforts to raise our game in this regard. In particular, we know we need to hire a next generation that includes more women, more minorities, and more veterans, and Bob and his team are working hard to achieve that goal. We're also continuing to support the professional development of women. Recently, DOE established the Learning Circles for Women Program, for Women Leaders Program, and this Learning Circles Program will help connect aspiring female leaders with a depth of diverse experience and professional guidance and influence of senior professionals and executive women within DOE. This was something that I was asked about during our first town hall, and I committed to doing all that I could to support the effort. And to improve the overall work experience, we've established a Workplace Improvement Forum, which is being led by Natasha Campbell in the office of the Undersecretary for Management and Performance. This forum will focus on areas of interest to employees, such as working conditions, facilities, and parking. Representatives from across the department, including leadership, union representatives, and individual employees, will participate in the forum, reflecting the diversity of our DOE workforce. This forum is now in its early stages. The team has engaged in a number of listening sessions with our program offices, employees, and our labor leaders. They're looking forward to getting to work on the most, on this very important initiative, and I understand that the first meeting of the forum will be on May 21st. There are also a series of brown bag lunches that have been organized in order to gather employee ideas and feedback to make this as effective as we want it to be. So reflecting this commitment, the secretary and I are really here to listen today, and we're ready for your feedback and your questions. We have my We have microphones here in Forestall, and site offices had the opportunity to send in questions ahead of time. We received a number of them. And so Tim will be reading some of those to us as well. Thank you very much.
First things first, I'm so glad that you made mention that the secretary was, as you know, kind of articulated as being the rock star, because the other option would have been for me to entertain you in some singing capacity, and that would not have been a very good thing. But I will tell you, listen, this is the important part of the conversation today, and we have half an hour or so left. So I'm going to throw out three policing functions. The first will be on me. I need someone, I believe you have someone that's going to give me the five-minute high signs, since I don't have a clock here. The second policing function will be on our secretary and deputy secretary. I need you two to be as short as you possibly can with your response. I know that's a challenge, so I may interrupt if necessary. And then third, we really need you guys to participate. And as you heard from the deputy secretary in particular, I mean, there were a couple of initiatives and changes to the way we do things that came about as a direct result of your input from the last town hall. And we have mechanisms in place that are going to do the same for results of this town hall and others moving forward. So again, microphones, you can start lining up. I'm going to start out with a question that came in from the complex earlier in the week, and it comes from NE. And it's one that is, I know for a fact, is a topic of discussion on a weekly basis inside of headquarters here, and it's dealing with DOE and its relationships with the laboratories. So, Mr. Secretary, the direct question. "The recent interim report of the Commission to Review the Effectiveness of the National Energy Laboratories identifies a quote-unquote 'broken trust' between DOE and the national laboratories that, quote, 'shows up as an excessive level of transactional oversight and control by DOE over the activities of the laboratories in conflict with the ideal relationship that is envisioned in the FFRDC model,' close quote. Since this report echoes many of the concerns about DOE and NNSA oversight that were identified in the 2014 interim report on the governance of the nuclear security enterprise, would you please comment on these reports and how you believe DOE oversight needs to change to repair its relationship with the national laboratories?"
Well, first of all, I actually believe that we are making progress along these lines. Some of it is through some of the processes that we have put in place, like the Lab Policy Board and the Lab Operations Board, which are really allowing us to tackle together some of the challenges in terms of management. Secondly, and I will come back to the transactional part, we could give examples, but let me just be concise, move on. Secondly is that with regards to the laboratories, we really are engaging them much earlier and to our benefit, I must say, in terms of helping shape where our programs are going. Just, I forget if it was last week now or two weeks ago, for example, there was what is now kind of an annual ideas forum with the labs taking part, and it's really a brainstorming about new directions for the department. Last year, we had a strong focus coming out of that of various cross-cutting initiatives, things that just really didn't fit in one single program office. We've got about a half dozen of those, and those have proved to be very popular in many places, not only in Congress and in the labs, but even at OMB, which is a good thing. Frankly, that was part of our FY16 strong budget request. So I think at that level, we are trying to get back to working much more strategically with the laboratories. However, we still also have ways to go in terms of moving back from what has become -- I agree that it is true, over the years, a more transactional approach to laboratory governance than the kind of outcome-oriented approach that we really want. Now, I have to admit, and that's been driven in many ways by many people, but I have to say, one of those at least has been Congress. That has pushed, what I would say, a greater risk aversion philosophy than a risk management philosophy. We do recognize that many of our activities, after all, do have risk, especially the nuclear activities. But we still need, we need a safety culture, we need line safety commitments, we need a risk management approach and not a risk aversion approach. Again, I think we're making some small steps in trying to get back to the FFRDC idea that in some sense incorporates that. For example, we have two groups working right now on pilot projects. One is the so-called Evolutionary Task Force, and that's looking at, literally, at various transactional elements and how those can be streamlined in the DOE Order System, et cetera. And a second, and I claim I take responsibility for its slow start, but a second group that's about to move on, what we call it, you know, is the revolutionary approach, where they will be looking at a particular, I would say, relatively simple laboratory in our complex. That laboratory leadership has stepped forward willingly to become a pilot in looking at some modifications of the fundamental M&amp;O construct, and to see if that can be maybe, for example, maybe combine some of the better elements of a cooperative agreement in that M&amp;O construct. And if that succeeds, well, then later we can maybe grow it, although we recognize that when you start getting to the more complex, let's say, NNSA laboratories with their risk profile, it'll be more and more challenging to do something like that. But anyway, we're launching in this direction. It's not something that changes overnight. It is a culture issue, and I always like to quote the quote that was in the Augustine Mies Panel Report, a quote of Peter Drucker, the famous management analyst, and the quote was a short one, "Culture eats strategy for breakfast." So we can't think that culture changes happen overnight, but I think we're pushing in the right direction.
Great. Thank you. And I know that I asked for shorter answers, but I think if you look at a number of different activities going across the department, to include, you know, the contracting piece, the culture aspects, safety, security, a lot of it has an underpinning in terms of relationships. I thought it was an important question. Deputy Secretary, you came to the department with a strong background in national security. Secretary, the president, and others recognized that, and then the secretary quickly levied one of several continuing tasks on you in several different areas, but one of them in particular was the, wanted you to kind of look at and prove our energy resilience and basically what I call the "all of the above" incident management response. Had a lot of questions coming from the group on this, everything from cyber to energy to grid and that sort of thing like that, so I'm kind of rolling into, ma'am, if you could, you know, kind of what are some of the things that you are doing in that area? And I will ask a specific question that came in from science. It says, "What are you doing to advance infrastructure investment in the grid to promote better security and replace aging facilities?"
Okay, thanks, Tim. So first, I'll start with what I mentioned, which is what we're doing for our workforce, Energy Incident Management Council work, et cetera. The first thing is, we're asking you to play a very active role. So each of you has been asked to do training, new training that's focused on how you would deal with an emergency in your workplace. We're providing training on active shooter scenarios, which unfortunately is something we all need to be prepared for. And so we put the responsibility on each member of our team to be prepared. Second, we have a very vibrant Energy Incident Management Council, which is meeting weekly to develop all of the protocols for our organization to ensure that we're prepared to respond whatever happens to this enterprise. And in that regard, for example, we have begun work to establish an integrated emergency operations center, something this department doesn't yet have, but which is the best practice in our government and which we need to work toward. So there will be a lot of effort underway. We'll be reaching out to many of you to support this, and I hope that you'll let us know if you see a problem that you think we're not addressing, which affects your safety and security in your workplace. On the broader mission, first of all, I'll add to the homework the secretary has already given to those who are watching today. In particular, the Chapter Two of the new QER describes in extremely vivid detail what it is that we need to do to enhance our resilience in the energy sector in this country. It makes very specific recommendations across a range of issues, and I'll just touch on several of them to give you a flavor of it. One is that we need to do a much enhanced job of working with the private sector, because 90% of the energy infrastructure in this country is owned by the private sector. And so in order to enhance the resilience of the grid, we have to work closely, interactively, continuously with all those who own that infrastructure, and that's a big project for us. Second, we have to work very closely with states. And so there's a big emphasis in the QER on the work that states will need to do to develop their own resilience plans for the energy grid. And we'll be providing a lot of technical support to that. Our labs will be actively involved. That's an important piece of business. And third, there's a big recommendation for reserves that need to be generated across this country, whether it's reserves in the form of transformers, which are very big pieces of equipment that can't be quickly either made or moved. And we're looking at whether we can create a transformer reserve, because that's an important potential single point of failure for a lot of customers. Also, reserves of fuel supplies like we've created in the Northeast region after Superstorm Sandy. So those are three examples of the kind of work we're going to be doing going forward.
Sorry, Tim, but I'm going to add something.
You're the boss.
This QER, again, I really urge you to have a look at it. It's got great stuff in it, but also just neat pictures, like, look for the photograph that shows what it means to try to move an 80-meter wind turbine blade over the roads. I mean, it gives you an idea of infrastructure challenges you hadn't thought of before. But the last thing I'll just say is, obviously, this QER, as I said, makes recommendations, so there's a lot of resources identified. Some of those resources, the down payment, I would say, is in our budget request. We have about $450 million in our budget request for QER items, petroleum reserve upgrade and distribution, for Chris, grid, state programs. But we also identify about $15 billion that's needed to move the dial on a whole bunch of problems. And for that, we're going to have to work with Congress and see if there aren't, you know, the kinds of creative approaches to supporting major national infrastructures the way this country has done many times over the last 50, 60 years, and to see if we can't do that for our energy infrastructure, which will be so critical to our environment and our economy going forward.
Thank you. So I gave the secretary a bye. I'm going to give the audience a bye in terms of, I don't see anyone lined up yet for questions. Do we have anyone in the middle of the aisles? If you raise your hand, we'll get someone over to you. Meanwhile, and I know that I've been here at Department of Energy for a little over a year, I know we have a lot of A-TI personalities, a lot of folks that aren't afraid to say what's on their mind, so I'd encourage you to step up. Meanwhile, Mr. Secretary, this comes in from NNSA. What do you see as the future of nuclear power generation?
Well, I think, we've discussed this before, and I think it remains frankly unclear in the United States. I've said before, cost is a huge issue, and we've provided, many of you know, some loan support to a couple of the new next-generation reactors being built in Georgia. There's two others in South Carolina. There's a fifth one, which is at TVA finishing off an oil project. They've had some delays, some cost increases, not on the scale that some of others have had, particularly it's a couple in Europe that come to mind. But how they come in on budget and on schedule is going to be really, really critical. The second element is that it's not an accident that all five of the new reactors being built are in the Southeast. It's really a regulatory framework issue where, for such massive capital requirements, you can have kind of a cost-plus relationship, you know, roughly speaking. So there's another question in general in this country where we have such different regulatory approaches, that is this going to become just regionalized because of these large capital investments? And finally, on the R&amp;D side, many of you know, so I won't say much about it, but that we are putting substantial hope into our assisting the development of small modular reactors. For example, one of the projects we're supporting to licensing is as small as 50 megawatts. Excellent safety characteristics, as far as we can see. It's got to get licensed by the NRC. But that's a case where, if that works, namely if the costs per unit of output are reasonable because of manufacturing advantages, then not having these enormous capital demands on one project may also free up the financing and get us free of that kind of geographical focus. So I think those are the issues, and let's face it, I think the cost performance of the big reactors being built, of the modular reactors just starting out, will be critical.
Thank you. Chris?
Mr. Secretary, you had a leading role in a historic negotiation with the Iranians. Could you tell us a little bit about what it was like being in the room and how that went?
In 30 seconds?
Sure. Well, the dynamic --
I saved my time. I want to do this.
The dynamic was that, first of all, the subject, you know, what's the goal? The goal was, on our side, to have significant restrictions on Iran's nuclear program for a considerable period of time. I can say, you know, briefly what our metric was, so that if Iran is indeed committed to a peaceful nuclear power program, over, literally over decades, the international community could gain confidence in that, and then they would become a country pursuing a nuclear power program under the NPT and the Additional Protocol. Although I do want to say, some of the restrictions, such as insight into the uranium supply chain going all the way back to the mines, is both unique and will be in place for 25 years. So this is in agreement with 10-year milestones, 15, 20, 25-year milestones, and essentially forever activities. So in a negotiation of that type, which involves all kinds of trade-offs, how many centrifuges of what performance level, what stockpile of uranium, at what enrichment, all these trade-offs, for example, on that pathway, that's why we needed the labs literally on-call all the time for that day's assignment in terms of modeling and analysis. And what it meant was that when it came to kind of unlocking the negotiation, roughly speaking, the head of the two nuclear organizations, DOE, me in this case, and Dr. Ali Salehi, who was the head of the Atomic Energy Organization in Iran, and by the way, a former foreign minister, not, you know, a major player in their system, that we were able to really sit down in a problem-solving mode and work through all these trade-offs, which, you know, were tough restrictions on their enrichment program, on their research reactor program, on their R&amp;D program. Give you an idea of a tough restriction, for example, the stockpile of enriched uranium. They are nearly finished getting, blending down or putting into reactor fuel a 20% stockpile, but mainly, we're talking about roughly 10,000 kilograms, 10 tons, of 5% enriched uranium that must go down for the sanctions relief really to take hold. I'm just picking one parameter. one parameter, from 10,000 to 300 kilograms of 3.67% enrichment. So a 97% reduction at, at a lower enrichment. So that's what we did, and, and Dr. Salehi and I probably spent somewhere between 30 and 40 hours in one-on-one meetings, let alone the other negotiations, but I think we, we came out with something that allows them to make some progress, but in a much more tempered way, that will solve our requirements of, for example, a minimum one-year breakout time for a minimum of 10 years, where breakout time is being defined very conservatively, not as the time to a weapon in a breakout scenario, but even just the time to accumulating enough fizzle material for a first weapon. And that's, and that's what we achieved. I might note that Dr. Salehi got his PhD at MIT in 1977, we overlapped there for four years, didn't know each other, but it was a very good social vehicle for us to, I think, develop the kind of confidence that is very important, and a personal relationship that's really very important when you're involved in, you know, in a tough, tough negotiation. Gives you a bit of the flavor.
Great, thank you.
But I want to add, it's not an agreement yet, so we still have to get all of this and some other issues codified by the end of June to have the full, the full agreement. And of course, I mentioned what we want, of course, what the Iranian side wants is relief from the, principally relief from the economic sanctions.
Thank you. Thanks for your question, Chris. Anyone else? Yep, we have one in the back.
Hello, I just want to thank both of you for hosting this event today, and I'd like to ask that in your travels, when you're talking to people who may not be very familiar with the department or kind of know about the department, what have you been really good about getting out in terms of our successes and the things that we work on? Or what are some things that we need to promote more to the public so they understand what our mission is?
Well, I'm, I'm the newer recruit, right? Mikel, what's surprising is how few people know what the Department of Energy does. And some of you know that when I told my mother that I was being asked by the President to serve in this capacity, she said, "Well, darling, I have no idea what the Department of Energy does, but you have always had a lot of energy, so I'm sure you'll be perfect for it." And that, that captured, she's a very informed citizen, she reads the newspaper every day, but people really don't know. So I think our, our mission, and the secretary is so focused on this, is to get out there and tell the story of what we do for the American people across the strategic agenda that you've set. The work, for example, by our public affairs team to lift up the role of the labs, once it became known that this was our role, because for a long time, as you said, we were under the radar, but once it became known, then to really tell the story of the human capital involved in supporting this negotiation and what it was that the President could have confidence in because of the expertise that we have built up over decades at our labs. That kind of storytelling, which makes it for people tangible, that it involves human capability, the dedication of the people I mentioned, and every day, people focusing on delivering results is what we have to do, so that the taxpayer feels, wow, the Department of Energy is really making things happen for me across the space of all the, the priorities that we have established, whether it's the weapons, the windmills, the quarks, or the quagmires. So we're working very hard on that to ensure that we get out and spend a lot of time talking in ways that are both direct, but also using media to amplify the story.
So I've been given the five-minute warning. Within that timeframe, I'd like to give this secretary and the deputy closing remarks, but I'd like to see if we can fit one more question in before then. This is for you. Shy, please.
That's dangerous.
That is dangerous.
Jonathan is leaving tomorrow, so--
Yeah, that's what's dangerous.
Actually, I do want to say, because he's probably touched a lot of you, Jonathan Levy, our Deputy Chief of Staff, will be taking his leave after, he claims he's tired at his young age, but anyway, it's been fun, and now he goes out with a zinger, I guess.
It's not so much a zinger, but you did say when, when you came in that you, you didn't want, you said, "Good news was optional, bad news was mandatory, and you got to have it first, doesn't get better with age." So I think a lot of people are probably surprised that you both read the FEVS data. And so I think it'd be, you know, we started with a little bit of that, the deputy talked about it, Tim mentioned it in his, his opening remarks, the bad news is we're not very good now in the FEVS data. And I was wondering if you could speak a little bit towards not just the work that the deputy mentioned, but also what you want to see from the workforce. It's a two-way street here, it requires people participating in the survey, but also what you all look for in it. What are you, what are you seeing? How are you holding your managers accountable? What are you guys doing to make sure that the workforce recognizes that you're responding to their input when we have this, this type of survey?
Well, I would start by saying we need to listen and hear the concerns and try to address them. So for example, there are a number of issues out in the field that I've heard about, I've brought them back and have met with our team here to ask the question, "What can we do to address these concerns?", which really go to the heart of our ability to retain the highest quality workforce across the country. That's a, that is a, a critical responsibility for us. But similarly, I learned this in, in one of my early jobs, it's very important when you go to your boss and you have a complaint, that you also have some options for solving the problem. So what we look to you to do as well is to help us figure out solutions, not just present them to us, but say to us, "Here are several ways that I can see that we could move forward together to address these concerns and build the highly capable workforce that will enable us to stay on the cutting edge of the, of the science and technology that we need to stay on the cutting edge of to compete as a nation, to support our economy, to give Americans jobs, and to give us a stronger future."
Well, okay, I think those are many, many of the key, key points. Clearly, I hope, I would, you know, the aspiration would be that everybody comes to work, goes home from work, number one, safe. Number two, feeling that they are part, no matter what the job is, part of the enterprise that really is doing important work for the, for the country, feels that they are treated fairly, and feels that they have the opportunity to apply all their talents to this enterprise that is producing so many important results for, for the country. That's the aspiration. The, what we read tells us, we're not quite there yet, we've got a little work to do. But as Liz says, that's only helped by, by, first of all, being, being frank in, in secure in, in the position that constructive criticism, suggestions are always welcome. And if they're not welcome, then I got a problem with the person who didn't welcome them, all right? Because that's, that's what we need to do. Jonathan, just maybe everyone didn't quite hear, I said, "When I," he's correct, when I came in, it was like the first day, I said, "Bad news, better get here quick," because that's what we have to, we have to react to. It's great when those days go by without it, and, and, and we get, and we get the, look, this is a complicated place, and, you know, but, and, and we hear the good news about the kind of things that I started with, that, that we are doing, but, but again, I, I think I want open, constructive communication, I want it received as, as such, and then, as Liz said, acting on appropriately with whatever other, other, other right options. Doesn't mean one always gets satisfaction, but, but I think it's, it's got to be fair to everybody to have their contributions and their observations heard and, and reacted to as appropriate.
And I'll just add one point to Mikel's question. One of the things I see as being very important is to shine a spotlight on the unsung heroes of this department who are working across this country, often doing jobs that, that most people will never see. Some of these are in very highly secured facilities where it involves human, human activity, it's not done by machines, it's done by human beings. Our future depends on it, our survival depends on it, and these people never get any glory. They can't even talk about what they do, but we need to recognize them for the contributions they're making to our nation, and so in every way that we can to tell the story appropriately, we need to do so.
Great, thank you. Jonathan, for the last year or so that I've worked with you, I, you very rarely miss a point, and, and you raised that question, I think, toward the end of this session, which is a, one of the major points for having these town halls, and that is employee satisfaction and what we can do to improve on it, particularly through the employee survey, which I believe is out this week. We strongly encourage everyone to open it up, fill it out, and, and we will act accordingly from there on. So thanks again for that question, and thanks for your service to this department and the nation. Sir, ma'am, would offer any other final comments, if any?
Thank you for the privilege of serving with you.
You took my line. Thank you all.
And one final point, for those that are out in the fields, we are, we would like to certainly give you a better opportunity to continue and join into this dialogue, and for those of you who are a little shy to kind of get up and ask questions, you know, we've created an environment by which you can weigh in as well, and that is through an email that we've created called s3mailbox@hq.due.gov. It's, if you, you know, repeat it, you can kind of go back and look at the DOCA cast announcement that talked about this meeting here and send there. But listen, so what we're going to do, if you've responded to that email with questions by next Monday, so we're giving you a week to, to send questions in, we're going to then kind of pull them together, choose a few of them, and have the secretary and the deputy answer them, and we will post them on a blog post, and they'll also be posted on the Powerpedia Town Hall page. Again, thank you for your attendance, your participation, sir and ma'am, thank you for your time as well.
Thanks.
(applause)